At 8:19 a.m., before we get started, I do need to let everybody at the table know that Community Martin will be recording us with the intent to review. Also, I believe John sent all the documents electronically to you, as well as you should have copies of those. They're also posted on our website for the public viewing, as has been our practice for this company over the past year. With that, we will get started. We can jump right in. The first thing on our agenda is COVID expenditures. So Michelle, I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, the, what was shared with them?
It did.
Oh, yes, okay. You did receive a COVID report that was actually as of the end of June, so not too much has changed since then. We do have the ESER degree grant, which we have now had approved. All of the ESER funds, except for the $10,000 under the ESER II, which was very specific for social, emotional student supports, and have been spent to date. So all ESER I, ESER II, the CVRF, and the coronavirus fund have been fully spent or accounted for at this point. We are now rolling into our ESER III grant, which has just recently been approved. When we submitted the original application, we did include the full-day kindergarten. We do intend to amend that grant, to remove the full-day kindergarten out of that grant. But we do have some nursing services in there, some student supports. There is really no PPP or facilities improvements included in this grant at this time. So really, it's student-based at this time. So we will continually move forward and just start spending the ESER III, which is in the amount of the $796,000. And 25% of that actually has to be spent on student supports. So we will make sure we are conforming with those guidelines. But we're just starting to access that last pot of money, and that's it as far as COVID funding for the school departments directly. As far as I know, I haven't heard of anything else that will be coming our way. As far as we know, everything else that's coming to cities and towns is going through our funding and not through any grants to the school department. If there are any questions, I'm going to go ahead.
Michelle, I believe we said in our school community meeting yesterday that we'll be getting updated in January.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so I apologize. I was sick earlier this week, so the financial reports haven't been updated for the end of November. But, you know, first week in January, we'll have the updated monthly reports and COVID reports as well.
COVID changes, you know, next year.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions? All right, moving along. Jason, APA funds update. What do you want to say?
So, the town is in our working group, which Superintendent is serving on, and Emily is also serving on. I think we have a good group of stakeholders at the table talking about APA and APA priorities. The initial step of the group was to set, was to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a, basically a priority criteria for each project that the town, that the working group and the town can use to prioritize proposals and projects that we received. That criteria was adopted in approval by the Board of Selectmen. We have about 70, 75 initiatives and/or projects that have been either submitted to the working group or drawn out of existing plan initiatives that we have that we've already kind of gone through, these recommendations for projects have been fully vetted, and we can have a possibility of being eligible for APA expenses. So we've put together now a, I don't know what we call it, but like a ranking spreadsheet that each of us are going through individually in ranking those projects and initiatives with the intent of getting back together sometime early January to review those rankings and be in a position to make a recommendation and presentation to the Board of Selectmen sometime January, hopefully. We have in hand $3 million right now. We expect to get enough $3 million next summer.
Is there, are there other results from the community survey that I didn't?
Yeah, yeah. You want to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
It'd be interesting to see what the community asked for too.
Definitely.
And when will that list of projects be published?
I mean, they can be published whenever. Yeah, they are probably right now. So we have a spreadsheet that I can share with you all, too. It's kind of a working document right now, but I don't have any that's perfectly comfortable sharing it to whoever wants to see it. With the understanding that there, it's a dynamic document. It will be changing over time because we're working on it as you speak. But, but yeah, yeah, it will give you an idea of what projects are, what the criteria we're trying to use is in terms of how we're ranking the project. And, yeah, I can send it over to everybody.
Thanks. Any questions? We hear all the community's comments.
Yeah, Megan, I just want to understand the process. Is that just selectmen, Board of Selectmen allocated, or does that get rolled into any other budget conversations that occur here or through the process of the town?
Good question. So technically speaking, it can just be spent. So it technically doesn't even need Board of Selectmen approval to expend. I think the idea is to bring that to the Board, just so there's consensus in buying it with everybody, to bring back a plan to the Board of Selectmen for their review and consideration. Part of the criteria that was adopted, we really wanted to do all that we can to not bake in one-time revenues into the operating budget. So we're kind of more focused, and it's not to say that we can't do it, but if we are, we need to understand that. It's a short-term investment. So if we want to create a position, for instance, through ARPA, we need to go in eyes wide open, it's a three-year, it's a three-year position, and then it goes away. So the criteria really prioritize public health. It prioritized one-time expenditures in infrastructure, facilities, capital, projects, et cetera, that of course tie back in to the overall COVID-19 recovery globally.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Megan, I feel the mention, I do have a hard stop at times for the committee. I apologize, but hopefully we have a good 30 minutes to get through some of the information.
Any questions? So let's move right into this little year 2020 budget discussion. There's obviously the budget books here that were provided to the school committee to on Monday or Tuesday, when we met with John and his leadership team to go through their individual requests. So that's all in here. We're not going to book through the school budget book tonight, don't worry, don't worry. But there are some summary, there's a presentation that we sent to you, and there are some summary, summary slides at the end of that, which is probably worthwhile going through at this point, because I would leave some summary numbers on what will come along with those numbers. I think since the last time we met, there have been a lot of work done, but the big thing is really working, like I said, Monday, Tuesday night, having our budget workshops with the leadership to go through changes of the goal of the class. And then last night at our school committee meeting, we had a presentation from our facility subcommittee to talk about what our capital requests are looking for, as well as how much facilities audit that is done. So similar to the ARPA list, this is a first, you know, it's a first pass. It will change over time, but we just kind of wanted to update this group to let you know where we are. And with that, I think, I will hand it over to you. Is that good?
Can I just, that's a quick question. Does this include the results of, like, what the presentation is, of those additions? Everything's been here?
Yep.
Those summary issues?
Yep.
There actually are a few, not many at this point, reductions, though they haven't been, the binders were done before the presentation was finalized, so they're a couple of changes that they will eventually come together.
Do you want to speak about that?
Sure. The road that led us to the budget workshops was, I met with the leadership team and said, what do you need to effectively run your school or your program in order to provide an exemplary education? And so when the ask is upwards of $5 million, you meet with the town manager first so that he is not surprised. And what was presented Monday and Tuesday is not a Christmas wish list, is not a laundry list, but things that directors and principals and the superintendent and central office believe help us to effectively run the schools and to provide an exemplary education. That said, this is the initial pass. The leadership team will be getting together and looking at this list. As Michelle said, there was a facilities subcommittee presentation on capital last night. I have not seen that prior to the meeting, and it told some of the things that are in this operating presentation. So I know now that that number in this will reduce, the leadership team will get together and see, are there any crossover areas? Are there areas where grant funding might come in? But our roll forward for salaries alone, we were at level service, is 1.3. The additional you see on slides, 88, 89, and 90. So there's 1.2 million in staffing requests across the buildings and divisions, and just at the bottom of that, it gives you what you get for those dollars. If you go back to the individual slides, or schools, or departments, it gives you an explanation for what that particular staff member would do. Just stop with staffing.
I have a question about the presentation. So it looks like under staffing, it's not indicated as an increase, but down below, it is reflected as an increase. So are these all increases that are not indicating that in this column because it's all new?
The bottom, that section ran in the half point, those are the new requests.
Here.
Above that is the, just the roll forward of the current staffing.
No, I know, I'm just saying that in the top section, you indicate what the extra request is.
Yep.
And in this section, it doesn't indicate it, but it is all extra. This is all an increase in this column, too.
Yes.
Let me try and channel.
Yep. It didn't exist previously, so yes.
Right.
Can I just add a little something?
So I think some of the themes that we've heard on Monday and Tuesday in terms of staffing additions is really adding some permanent subs, because substitutes have historically been, you know, challenging for us to, for, you know, our operations. We do have permanent subs at the vet schools, so kind of in that model as well. So making that consistent throughout the district. STEAM curriculum is one area that we've heard consistently from the community, and to kind of get us to the level that we probably want to be in Marblehead, adding that curriculum initiative throughout the district. So we see that as one of the changes that we've, of course, that we've heard from the leadership team. Technology, also another big investment there. So I know, you know, we listed kind of all the, and have all the additions here, but those are some of the pieces that have really come out, as well as at the high school around college and career counseling. That's another area that I'm curious.
I will say I forgot one important piece. We hosted two public budget forums this year before we launched the budget process to hear from the community, some of their priorities and things that they would like to see the school. And so as Megan said, STEAM was something that came up. We're adding another bus driver. We currently have a bus driver in the budget that we cannot find. Bus drivers are an elusive group, but we are adding so that we can expand the power of the program that was begun this year.
I do want to just expand that comment to say, we currently, with the new bus that we were able to acquire last year, purchased through the town, we now have four school buses, four base school buses, and we only have two drivers. So that's why if we add an additional driver, that will give us four permanent bus drivers, so we can actually utilize four of our buses. So while one of them is extremely old and not as in greater shape as the others, we do have the four buses are fixed and running. We can get the bodies to run.
And then, so I think in this sheet reflected, that has the rolling numbers, but also, as Dr. Park said on the slides, you know, 88, 89, and 90, I believe it is. So that rolls everything in, there's a breakout in the slides for one-time costs. So those are, the total isn't all recurring, so I think, you know, which is pretty fluid, but, you know, the one times round out somewhere around 1.3 million. And that was the challenge in some of these presentations, you know, to try to figure out, you know, does it stay in the budget, or does it become part of the one-time expense because it's just that? So for instance, the ask for technology in some areas by Steve Quachek is just a one-time, a one-time ask, and you'll be able to see more details on that as well. So the next slide is the service and operating requests. These would be referred, these will be added to the operating budget. Again, some of the things there, we're pursuing tuition-free kindergarten. We are one of the handful of districts left in the Commonwealth that still charges for full-day kindergarten, so we'd like to have tuition-free kindergarten for our children. Lot of curriculum needs. Assistant Superintendent Murphy has lamented several times that there is an absence of curricula in many content areas in the district. So this budget reflects getting literacy materials, content supplies and materials that have been not funded at the level or have not been funded historically. The STEAM programming, a lot in technology, subscriptions and software, professional development. A big chunk is out of district tuition costs, which we anticipate are increasing. We've had several students move into the district that are outplaced at this time, and so we want to make sure that we're appropriately budgeted for those. And then transportation costs for students is also increasing. Sure. And then the final slide are those one-time asks that David was talking about. Safety and security is really a big chunk of that, given where we find ourselves today. Safety and security, there's some areas that the district really needs to address immediately. Again, technology, we saw that last year. Stephen McQuaid effectively really got a benefit to our district. He came in, did some great work with the Brown School Project, and is now wanting to expand that out to the other district schools. STEAM again comes up as a one-time cost to get the materials needed to launch that program. And then just across other content areas, PE teachers, music, art, engineering, woodshop are asking to have some things for their curriculum that they have not been funded in the past.
So this is the slide that I think I asked a question about. So these are the one-time costs slide, 1.3 million. So technically, I mean, this is where some of the capital requests maybe will be pulled from?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And has there been any thought to using some of the ESER funds for some of these requests?
Yes. And that will be the work of the leadership team on Monday, looking at some of these requests, doing any consolidation if possible. I don't know that there will be a lot, but also looking at how they're funded.
Okay. I think back, actually, ask about the staffing request. So on the, the budget summary document, if I line my gun, it lists out, what is this? It just shows the, you know, the salary, higher year plus salary adjustments, and then it has a staffing request separated out. So under the existing salaries, you know, there's a fair amount of movement in some of the line items. I know some of those are explained in, like, the teacher leaders, like, that was in there. There's a couple reductions. I was just wondering, maybe you guys could just talk through some of these adjustments? And does it include things like anticipated retirements, just general movement, you know, within staffing that happens every year?
Right now, to be honest, we have not received, I don't believe, a single intent to retire as actually due. Normally, at this point, we usually have three or four we're hearing about at least. There's one potential that I'm hearing about, I have not seen anything official. So there are no retirements built in at this point into any of these figures. The teacher leaders was an initial request. Actually, that has actually been since cut in half, so that will be gotten in at some point in the very near future. Athletic coaches is just, they, like, they increase there is due to step increases they receive each year. There's a five-step program or chart that they follow, so each of the coaches, as they come back, they go up a step each year. Just some of the fluctuation athletics, it's not significant there. Unemployment compensation, we had increased that by $40,000 last year because we were doing some layoffs. We actually did not need that, so we're bringing that back down to $60,000, which is typically where we typically see our budget running. High school student activity is increasing by $5,668. That's just due to what the contracts paid up this year, just trying to get that up. Summer special ed programs increasing $5,000, that increased just because of a large amount of students. Athletic driver salaries is going up $6,000 just because our driver salaries have increased, so therefore their overtime rate increases. And then the tuition-free staffing, you know, tuition-free kindergarten staffing is $375,000, which is the last line of the first section there.
So would the tuition-free staffing cover all kindergarteners in town, so nobody would be paying?
Correct.
Sure. Just wanted to clarify that. And then for the new staffing requests this year, forgive me for not having the history off the top of my head, but would you say that this has been a little bit of a buildup over the last few years, or is this something that's consistent with new staffing requests year over year? And if you forecast about the next three to five years, would this be a typical number and we would need additional staffing every year? Or is this something that would probably get us to a point where we feel it could get us through the next couple of years?
I guess I'm not the best Marblehead history, but I'll give it my best shot. I think this is a buildup. I think principals have been asking for years for staffing, and it has not happened. For example, the middle school principal last year got a reading teacher in the budget that he said he had been asking for for eight years. And so he didn't put any staffing requests in this year, and he laughed, and he said, I got my reading teacher last year, I'm not pushing my luck.
Okay. Yeah. And that's what I've seen, I mean, this is my third time to see it going into at this point. That's what I've seen, and obviously I have not been here at the typical Marblehead times. But we usually see about, I would say about half of this typically what we see, and then we start vetting the process. But this is, this is higher than what we normally would see.
And then the middle, it's badly obvious, but the middle salary adjustments cola, that's our contractual obligations, where that's no matter what, there's, we really don't have any opportunity to go up or down.
Exactly.
Just wanted to make sure.
Exactly. All of our unit contracts are settled for the next two and a half years, so we know exactly what those costs are going to be.
Then each director or principal meets with me and Michelle, and the first two questions at line up are, will you have any retirements? Or do you know of any staffing changes? And what is your enrollment? And so we do, I did a presentation to school committee last night on enrollment, and that is something that we pay attention to as we change and look at staffing.
Now, these numbers include any benefit estimates, but cost of benefits, this is just strictly salary.
Strictly salary, yeah. And I just noticed at the bottom of the staffing request is a human resource generalist. Is there any, have you done a joint town, schools, HR?
It's a slow of progress. We're working together on it. We've had several very good meetings, and we're making progress. It's just, we want to be, I don't want to speak so soon, but I think we want to be thoughtful in the way we implement, and we don't want to throw everything at once onto one person who clearly wouldn't be able to do it all, because there's just nobody, nobody on the planet has the bandwidth to do it all. So it's like, let's make sure, let's make sure we're transitioning to a point where there is collaboration in a thoughtful, meaningful way. But yeah, there has, it has started. It has started, yes.
And that was a question that was asked during the budget workshops. I think it's been a great collaboration. Cassie has done an exceptional job coming into an absence of processes and systems that are effective and efficient, and she's trying to build that. This generalist would be totally on the school ledger. As we share, Cassie's salary as the director, the generalist would be on the school department side. That said, the question was, will she do any work for the town? And I said, in the course of normal human events, yeah, probably, but the school is picking up the generalist's salary, but I wouldn't say she would never, or he would never do any work for the town.
And she's very, she's very, very good. We're lucky to have her.
I have a question about the, those areas, I don't know if you ever indicate, I know this is the first conversation, and it's my very first conversation, but if you ever indicate, you know, what are those costs that are not negotiable, not movable, likely a salary cost, like the out-of-district placements, you know, things where you're legally required in one way or another, it might be helpful at some point just to have those marked so we know, because those are very big numbers, but I understand you can't do much about it, and you're estimating, but whatever it is, you have to pay. So I think that would be helpful just to have those things at some point called out so we know, you know, if they're there, how much we can do about it. One other follow-up, crowd just looking up earlier when we were talking about, we're looking at the one-time costs, the $9.25 per technology. That's built into this, so when I look at, I think it's page three, the budget summary, IT hardware increase of $8.40,000, is that one time?
Most of it.
Most of it? Okay. So the, I guess, the one-time costs are in this operating?
Yes, they are.
Just wanted to make sure.
And we should, I mean, do you mind if I say something about that? Like, we should, we were talking about it in staff meetings last week or thing. I mean, we classify as one-time rest, or one-time expenses, but there are some of these IT costs that we really shouldn't have a plan just in annual allotment because we need it and we're not doing it. So, and that's not just the school side, frankly, that's the town side, too. We got to do some work on developing our own IT improvement plan on the town side, but there is a, there's a real need, and while they are one-time, the true definition of one-time investments, they are one-time investments that are probably close every year, every year, because we need to be making those type of investments more than we are now.
That's a great point. Steve's going to dig deeper into this, and they'll be more detailed, but for instance, his studies are showing we have devices that have Windows 7, and Windows 7 is going off of support. It makes it like, almost like an iPhone 4, if you want to consider technology. So Jason's point, you know, you make, you know, you make the investment in technology, but then in a few years, you know, it's updated. And so we need to do, we do need to look at that to make sure we have the monies to go forward. And one of the things that's come before, been come over many, many years, is to look at sort of laddering those expenses so that you don't, you don't buy everything all at at sort of laddering those expenses so that you don't, you don't buy everything all at once, you know, you're getting, you know, in one, you might do a third, one-third refresh one year, one-third. And then so you have this rolling refresh process that, same thing with the fleet equipment in town. We don't buy all of our new equipment at once, almost all of it's that.
Part of it's that, part of it, students have aged out, but then we are also anticipating about an additional half a million dollars in tuition, so all netted together.
Yeah.
It's about that seven hundred thousand dollar figure.
At some point, is the revenue side presented?
Not at this moment, no.
No, no, I understand at this point, but it's, at some point, will the revenue side be presented?
Um, I, I.
These decisions, I, these decisions here are based on the other revenues that are coming in, obviously.
Really, the only revenues that would impact this is the two that I just spoke of, the tuition and, and the circuit breaker. The other ones are very small revolving accounts. We really don't have too much going on. We have, for example, we have a rental program that pays two stipends for two, two workers to keep that rental program running. Other than that, we really don't have any substantial revenue dollars. But I will at some point give a, an update of what we're anticipating our revolving funds to be for the coming year, for the revenues and the expenditures. It gives a little summary of what each is used for. So yes. Yes, I did provide the recurring grants as well, not the, not the one-time grants. So that, that will be coming.
So the, I'm sorry, you said it, the out-of-district tuition estimates here are known students in the district, or are you also building in additional?
Most of them are known. Unfortunately, we have a significant surge of kids that are being evaluated right now. I believe we have, I want to say over twenty to four thirty students that are being evaluated currently right now that are not on our rolls. And primarily, they usually come up at preschool age. That's when early intervention identifies them and brings them to our attention. But once they turn three, they are our responsibility, so. The influx of evaluations right now is unbelievable.
So you're anticipating?
Yeah, so we are, we are building a little bit of anticipation. It could be worse, but we're trying to, we're trying to be conservative, but make a good judgment call at the same time.
Could we, next time we meet, would we be able to get a breakout of, you know, the in and out for out for the special education costs, since that is such a big bump, you know, that we're going to have to talk through this year? And, you know, it's one of those unfunded mandates, right? So, so it would be great to see the breakdown, and also what Jason said, you know, showing the revenue coming in, what's going out, you know, what our assumptions are just broken out.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Can I ask for more information too, perhaps on the, I know we talked about the hardware expense, the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'm just curious what, you know, what that is. You have a software line on it as well, and I'd be helpful to understand what type of hardware, and how much of it is, is one-time, how much of it is, you know, like a refresh every year or next number of years?
In the intervening seventy-nine slides, it is broken out, so there'll be a technology section in there, and we'll show what those dollars are for.
In the slides in as well, or in the book?
All right.
It will detail it a little bit more.
But I'm happy to get you more information if it's not.
Okay, I'll just get that first, thanks.
John, do you want to talk about access?
Yes, I did a little bit. The leadership team will be getting together and looking at the budget workshops, taking the feedback from the school committee, the questions that they ask, looking for places where there might be an opportunity to collaborate or consolidate, given the update last night with the facilities subcommittee. Some of the capital requests that were in this operating presentation have been pulled out, so some additional conversation around that. And also looking at grant funding, or how some of these might be covered in different
You know, Steve's done a great job at that too. I mean, he recently secured a grant, it was about two months ago, I think, for three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that helped with mobile Wi-Fi hotspots for a certain percentage of students so that they could have access to Wi-Fi at home if they don't. And he applied for that grant, and then it also provided for some more Chromebooks and iPads, so he's, he's really good about that. He has a grant that he's going to be reaching out to you about.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Yep, so he's doing a really good job, has really good experience there when it comes to that.
John, do you have a copy of our budget calendar? Do you have the, like, the H G P?
No, the truth side is, that's a packet. January fourth, we have a, for the school department budget subcommittee. There's one listed Tuesday, but I think this, the twenty-first is happening today.
So when, just what we've got through here in terms, because we are presenting to the comm, what?
The twenty-fourth.
So we need to meet, definitely that, we got the eleven, probably the, oh, sorry.
Maybe the thirteenth?
Uh, and I just, are Tuesdays, do Tuesdays work for this person or not? Maybe it works Tuesday, Thursday. Yeah, so maybe we do that eleven.
The day the vehicle capital needs to be, that's not a meeting, is it, Jason?
Yeah, does that work? Good morning here. Yeah. So I probably.
Should we just say nine eight fifteen?
Eight fifteen works, yep. So could we also, that, we may see the capital, I mean, I know that everything is still, it's very fresh, right? And everything's still flux, but if we could also, you know, talk about the capital requests, talk about what's been moved out of here into the capital and, and, yep. We should definitely go through, we'll definitely have that listed for you, but I think we should also talk about process too. Yes. That's for today or for the month? Or reviewing the capital requests, so, I mean, please, let's see, you guys usually collect them all townwide, right? And.
Yep, so we'll, we'll, see if the requests will meet with individual departments, and we'll try to squeeze them as much as we can really, based on the priorities that departments have and the funding we know available. And if there are, you know, essential needs that we, that can't wait but we can't afford, then we're going to have to have a discussion about how to go about addressing those.
I assume, you know, John and Jason are really good at complex.
I do just want to mention that one thing I do think that we won't be able to afford that is going to be a critical need in the next year or two is going to be the high school roof, and right now we're looking at a price tag of approximately three point nine million.
Three point nine now? That keeps growing. Wow, okay.
It does. So we're, we're going to try to get a couple more estimates, that was only based on one estimate.
There was good conversation at school committee around that last night, and it's just based on the one estimate.
Yes.
That's purpose would be to have more.
Yeah, if you think, if you think about the process, it would have to wait for town meeting approval.
Right.
So you wouldn't be able to secure the contract until June.
Right.
Then we're hearing, Todd's hearing, based on the size of the roof, it's a project that can't all be done in one year necessarily. So to nail down that cost today is going to be, you know, a challenge and going to need to be conservative about that, but.
And it's not really the best, best plan to be.
Yeah.
Going to the market.
So we're going to be drilling down on that a little bit more, looking at a few other avenues.
Yeah, but I just wanted to throw that huge price tag out there because it's significant. Not to think that, you know, our, our capital request is going to be two, three hundred, four hundred thousand this year, or, because it doesn't include all of the critical needs that were identified in our capital needs assessment last year, plus a couple other things, it's security. Do that at all.
I mean, I know you have a hard time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just being, yeah.
I just want to say, you know, thank you. I know we always do this, but, you know, thank you for all of this information and for laying all of this out, you know, it's such an early stage, and, you know, I think we all understand, you know, these numbers are going to move around over the next, you know, weeks, months, and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll work through it and, and get there. But thank you for presenting just such a, you know, preliminary number for us.
Agreed, and, and this was very helpful, this document. One request would be as we move through this process to maybe kind of track, I mean, I can always bring this back and see version two, three, four, but where things are going up and down throughout, just so I get a better understanding of how you're working with what the town has available and whatnot.
Most certainly, yeah.
Michelle does a pretty.
She'd probably do that.
Michelle started that.
Michelle does a pretty well of the budget tracking.
Three years ago, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And it is, I mean, you can thank certainly to Michelle, but Dr. Bucky and the admin staff that have worked in the month of December to pull this all together, and working with the assistant superintendent, I mean, it's really refreshing, you know, Michelle's third year that the, you know, she has done a lot of work, as you've seen, there's monies where there's decreases and moving monies to make sure they're accounted for in the right departments, right schools, right accounting codes. And it, there's just a high level of confidence with the work that Michelle's done, some efficiencies that she introduced last night, for instance, to put purchasing cards in place that provide more audit controls, and it just continues. So we have a real high degree of confidence, more so than we've ever had in previous years. And with the direction of the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, you know, the administrators of the schools have really come together to, to pull together a very thorough presentation of what Dr. Bucky said is an exemplary education. So it's been really good work at an early stage.
Yeah, yeah, no, we appreciate you working with us to shift out the timelines, but I think it's, it's, you know, really, it's, it's for the good of the entire town that this is moved up. And, you know, the schools, you know, we've always met with the schools early anyway, but to get this far in the process as soon as, is fantastic, and we really appreciate all of the hard work. Thank you. Thanks, David.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Rest on the journey us at nine oh five.
Have holidays.
Yeah.
Holidays.
Holidays. Yeah, absolutely.